3.1, we're ready to move on to the session. As they call the order, the August 23rd, 2023 Governor's Board of Special Meetings at 4:46 PM. 2.1, approval of the agenda for motion for the agenda. Second? All those in favor? Aye. Motion for the agenda passes. 3.1, public input concerning item 4.1 on the agenda during public input. Okay. No... No... Alright. At this time, one board member is ill and another has a conflict in a week here soon. So the special meeting will be adjourned until after the regular meeting is completed. Once the regular meeting ends, the board will reconvene at the special board meeting. Alright. You have any more to say? Okay, great. Okay, we're done. Cool. I'll go back. Um... Alright. Got it. I'm ready to say it.
That's great.
I will be down. Alright, 3.1, reconvene in open session. Reconvene in open session at 5:55 PM. By law, board policy, and as by this meeting, you are recorded by law, board policy, members of the public may address the board on any item on agenda or any non-agenda item. The public must present your requests to the board that were asked to kindly introduce before this time to help determine if the meeting. If there is a list for a non-agenda item, they can return it prior to item 4.2 during the public regarding non-agenda items. He will be recognized and called to the podium at that time. He will have three minutes to address the other board. For those individuals who would comment on a particular agenda item, your speaker shall be returned in by item 5.5 during the public regarding agenda items. He will be recognized and called to the podium when your request is then comes up for three minutes to address the other board. 3.2, board acting taking a close session. During the board having a close session and took action reject claim filed by claim NR file on July 28th, 2023 by a vote of 4-0 with 4 members of the staff who passed it. Now, 3.3, please leave this panel. We will be talking about what they've put through.
Ready to begin. Hi. I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the world, the majority in its essence.
3.4, approval of the agenda concerning voting to approve the agenda. Second? All those in favor? Aye. Approved the agenda passes. 4.1, correspondence. Special questions.
Do you think that the conference that we received the following correspondence regarding this experience on this public Delmar H. school project? Thank you.
4.2, during the public regarding non-agenda items. Now, all members of public who requested to address the other board regarding items that are not on the agenda, members of public would like to address the other board regarding a non-agenda item, must complete a survey of this time. Alright. First, we'll have Elena Bussfars. I will resume.
Okay. Good evening, members of the board and cabinet. My name is Elena Bussfars and I teach the cultural life skills classes in Delmar. And I've been a special education teacher in our district for the past 11 years. Most people, including myself, leave bad reviews in public schools, but I also leave in good reviews in this school. And so that's why I chose this. From my perspective, there have been a lot of positive changes in our district within the special education department, and there are a few things that I would like to highlight. I worked the year, so I was summer and was able to work with Megan Ship almost every day. I appreciated how she was available to speak with me, even when she was busy typing on her computer by committing to give me a few minutes or as long as I needed over time to answer any questions or to listen to suggestions I had for that great school year. And what I really appreciated was that the center of each conversation was always the student in lower class for them. I also appreciated that Megan was proactive and scheduling meaningful back-to-school professional development for the special education sub-group. My sub-group contains only five of our classes within the district and we teach an alternative curriculum in accordance with some curriculum. And having us meet together to go over the curriculum instead of attending other professional development that was scheduled was not only relevant, but necessary. I hope that our small sub-group keeps getting taken into consideration when signing CLWs and staff meetings. There have been so many awesome additions and changes to our specific curriculum that I would personally like to continue my work on. Last year, during teacher conference week at specialist, the special programs were given two days to work with our staff in the areas that we felt was beneficial in their positions. This kind of put me through good years and my instructional assistants also who made a broad as a training course to their jobs and the students they work with. Last year, also instructional assistance hours were extended by 15 minutes each day, which was optional so that teams could meet together without students present for additional training and communication. This was very beneficial to my classroom team and helped us support our students. This year, IAs' hours were extended permanently by 15 minutes and this time has been invaluable to making the classroom smoother and benefiting our students. And then speaking of professional development, I want to thank Dr. McQuirr for allowing teachers' agency last year in selecting areas they wanted to grow in professionally. For me, that time was spent, was well spent and greatly appreciated. The research and learning I did was very useful to the position I teach. And then last night, I went to the big rights family in HR. I had a meeting with them and they were able to accommodate me for unexpected surface steps, which really made me feel valued and capable. Our compliance, our compliance, I hope that we can do on...
Thank you. Next agenda, you both don't have preferable. You have any thoughts?
Hi, again. I'm just here to ask if you could please use, have the Delmar Hills swing set, at least the chains that seats her place. They're so rusty that the kids' family, they still need the big touchroom and they fall apart in their hands. I recognize that the renovation is scheduled for next year, but replacing the swings change should be a pretty easy quick fix. Additionally, it very many possibility of updating the playsets in advance of the whole school renovation, including little toys of the smaller playground area. That would be great. Since I'm a parent of kids at two different schools and I get to see all the amazing playgrounds happening at other schools, I'm like, what? Delmar Hills was very impacted and the chain thing is driving me nuts that my kid can't go swing and my little kids don't want to touch it. That's a genuine fix. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen Doyle, and next to me, Nick Corris.
Hello, everybody. I'm Ellen Doyle from Delmar Hills. I'm just happy to say that I saw a view of the tour pack guy, it was really beautiful. It was nice to meet everybody. It was very cool, very fun to be able to meet. However, I am a little bit concerned about my lack of centralized library. I care as far as that last time, so I'm really hoping that we can get a lot more information out of these meetings and teachers. You know, the innovation center area seems fantastic, but it's very much of that, it's not an actual library. Your innovation center is loud and voiceless and the building and libraries are quite , you know, and really beneficial for children, kids, and for how to research books and the books are everywhere. It really does make a lot of sense. You know, the same way that my house, everyone in my house has books in it, it's not a lot of that, it's like, you know, whether it's steel or maybe it's a company. So I'm trying to look at my organization about what is happening, how it's going to be, so there was that, so over there, probably come in there. If we are planning on decentralizing the library, I hope that we consider some of that space that we need, high-end libraries, moving to, considering the problem of being a big issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Corris and I hope he will be, I apologize, like, when you hear Abrams.
Hello. I have two kids at St. Luke's. I'm here because of concern because there's no security guard full-time, full-time, crossing those fences, getting to the school, it's too easy. I know there's some discussion regarding blocking the door, but the door leads nowhere. So when I heard about that, I thought it's the right time to come and raise my voice because I'm in the wreck of the security guard. And that's it. I want to hear what you guys want to hear on my end as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I have the time. That's why we don't respond. Like, and it's...
Well, you're already quite concerned about it.
Understood. Thank you. The Mur, well, Mur Abrams and I have the other one.
I'm on the quick. Last time, I was on the side. Good evening. My name is Mur Abrams. I'm here to discuss the topic that we discussed before, that eventually. This category was to us as a family, a community in the area and one representing so many families that are coming due to Delmar, one of the valley, the gray area. We read that eight of 12 schools in California that don't offer TCA are right here, paying more money, and it's very understandable that we're a luckier area than it accounts for the middle parents who aren't competing with the ever-increasing prices of, you know, parents and groceries. And it's a constant struggle, even with families to heartbreak and stuff. It is a topic I know that stays in the hole, it's very, it's sort of about as well, and I hope that we will hit well. So I heard you, a new mom, I have three little boys, one in New Year's district, but we have two more coming up and we hope to be able to present a lot of regularities that we can, anything that we can say.
Thank you very much. Lots of gent, so.
Hi. I was wondering why you tried to start kindergarten with the agenda? Because at the last July 26th board meeting, it seemed like you had the space for it in order to offer transitional kindergarten and it was also you had the budget to be able to offer it. And so it kind of seems like a shame that you didn't offer transitional kindergarten just because, I guess, maybe the staff didn't have enough time to talk to the CMs, the teachers association about having transitional kindergarten? But there really does not seem to be any reason that transitional kindergarten is not in office this year. I was also surprised that there was nothing about the media specialist or librarian on the agenda as well. Before the July 26th board meeting, I noticed that actually the description for the media, the library media specialist was described with the changes that were proposed at that board meeting, but then after the board meetings, since there was no vote taken on the changes, it reverted back to the, I guess, the job description before, that was there before that board meeting. So I'm wondering, are you still looking for media specialists and what are those job descriptions? Because I think one of the really important roles of a librarian is to be able to select the books and to guide students towards those books. And I think that was a little, I found it a little appalling that the direction that you seem to be going was to allow children to just access the books without any guidance or, and I'm not sure if this is true, but you know, it's really important for young children, especially since we have California as a low literacy rate, we're 49th in the nation, that we have really good librarians who really encourage the students to read what they're interested in. My son was not really a big reader, so it was really important for him to have adults who were new and knew what his interests were and really guided him towards those books. So as an elementary school district, I hope we really take the libraries and encouraging children to read very seriously. Thank you.
And we're at the 5.1, quarter board of the Delmar Government Association, President Kids and...
Good evening. I'm here to vote for the board. I'm here for first, first time. And you had those two face president of the year, and I'm happy to do it. I've sat here for three years, we're going to go and do all the, up to down, you know, great thing of going by the teacher right now. And one thing I found out doing as a teacher, as coach, as camper, and all that, so I'm quite happy to do it. So, we're moving forward to the next school year. I've only heard great things from the board. The energy is great. I know CDM, first state staff on Monday, August 7th. It's always a lot of time earlier that, and this is what we did bring notice, that's helped. However, we had sending teachers in there to bring them to our site and staff, but the energy went off. I love that about this. Then going to the next day, we got to know Chanel, we did a super fundraiser. It's not just the impartment, like, that's not just the creative, it's all other good stuff, but it's all the employees that are there. It's not just CDM came up together, it's not just Chanel, it's not just, so your staff coming up together, everyone coming out, it's everything, it doesn't go in totally bad, I do, but we appreciate that. One of the highlights going through that, it's a study, it's great looking at change, but one of the two highlights is watching, we had an interview with Sharon. I have, that was, that was my, it's with me if you sat there and tried to talk a minute, maybe realize what was going on, Megan, you know, that's not... And that was pretty incredible. I think you guys were still there at that point. That was incredible. Back forward, it's already day eight, so can't believe that, but from things on my side and other things that I've spoken with so far, everything got to a great start. And I just wanted to thank you, the board, for building the relationship that everyone is doing, there's a doubt for all of us. Thank you, Ellen Doyle.
Thank you, Jason, for the great seeing face. We are moving to 5.2. We're from the, our school, how much are we familiar with? We're all right.
Good evening, I'm Mark. Just providing the third members of the board and of the cabinet. So exciting, school's starting up again and our kids are meeting their new teachers, some of some same old classmates, some new classmates, some of their new schools. So there's a lot of energy around the school and it's just great. For us at the MSCEF, it means the start of a new year for fundraising and a new campaign. And so it's exciting. It also means that we have new people that we're coming to our district, don't know what the MSCEF is or why it's important to support the MSCEF. So it's really important that our directors are getting out there and going to the orientation and going to those students in different ways, trying to communicate the message of the importance of our work. So the good thing is that we have a lot of, not just this my second term as, or second year as both of the MSCEF, but we have a lot of members of the board who were new last year, who are continuing on the second year this year. So there's a lot of advantages to having that experience for those board members, it's going to be more effective this year, I hope. The only thing that I noticed is that they've only shifted the lower again this year, so we just have to keep in mind, if you're a family, if you're a parent, try to reach similar goals. So my only concern starting off the year, if I think with the energy and experience that we have, I think it will be a good year. One thing I want to show you about our campaign, so we created a flyer for this year, we're getting out to parents, we can put it in the district office, people are going to pick it up. One thing that we decided to do sort of a little different than last year is we recognize that a lot of our fundraising has been affected, in part, due to families who are able to pay the full amount that we recommend, the recommended amount. And we thought that there might be some families who we've heard are asking if they can do more, if they're willing to do more. Sometimes they'll do the recommended amount of 800 per student in the fall campaign and the job account will see that they'll give more. So we wanted to recognize families that are able to give more. So we have a new magnet that you'll see this year that's going to go on the back of cars. That's the gold magnet for the legendary level. Visionary, sorry, visionary level. I'm sorry to see terminology, but visionary level. So hopefully we'll see a bunch of those supported on cars this fall campaign. Of course, we also depend on families that are not able to do that, the recommended level. So we're also going to be working on trying to strengthen just general participation numbers at all the schools. It's really the message that any amount is beneficial to supporting on C+ students is really important, that people feel that they're part of creating the, helping support having the excellent education that we have with us in the program and in the district. So we're going to try both levels, both to give more as well as trying to increase participation in general. And that's really it. And we're just trying to get the message out, why is it important to support C+? Why are districts needing additional funding? You know, that the state has, is not supporting support rent and so the district needs additional support from our families to go all the way, to be able to have a kind of charter program that we have. So I hope that this year, there's more stability. I think the last was a lot of uncertainty at the start of the year with the economy. I think people have been in this environment for a while now and so hopefully we will have a better year this year and that's what we're all going to try to do our best. So thank you all. That's it.
Thank you very much, Rob. Appreciate it. Moving to 5.3, the board reports of the deputy board. Take a sound down.
Thank you. Highlight of the last month was the welcome back, the adventure there, for better or worse, it was a videotape. So you didn't have to see me on the sweet Caroline. But, you know, all fun aside, I think it gave me a great example of what leadership means. A good leader shows vulnerability. They are, they relax that or show some weaknesses or forcing skills, but it's also the ability to inspire. And you saw different players in one room in the span of one hour, how a superintendent can have an inspiring message that takes the past and the future and bridges it together and welcomes people back. And you saw that every player, the leadership of the cabinet, the principals, the teachers, everybody always, in every position was in that room and inspired that day. It was clear that they liked working together as a team at their school sites and within the district. And it was clear that they were there for mission for the kids. And just super excited to end their summer vacation and actually be at the back of work. So I really have to applaud the staff at all levels for showing that energy and leadership and it really starts the year off in a great way. So thanks very much.
I too agree that the, I call the welcome back day, it is a highlight, it's highlighted here, but this one was different for me because my daughter joined me, who happens to be working in my office and like, we have staff that teaches welcome back on our way to work. And to see her, who was a student in the district, see the teachers that she had and for them to see where she's at in her life and know that they sent her on that force, that trajectory and for her to think that for doing that, it's almost like a whole circle. And it was, I think it was fulfilling for me to see that. I think it was fulfilling for the teachers to, they didn't fill a hole, but it was fulfilling for the teachers to see where she's at now. And so, well, I think that day is a great day on the calendar all the time. This one really struck a nice chord for me on a personal level and welcome back to everybody. As I recall, that was a good celebration.
Well said, Alan and Doug. So no one, Alan, too much except for it was really joyful for the year that day and very unexpected, we had a lovely, great back-to-school practice, but you know, really tough at the time. I'm sure we've seen that, sure. Hope it was more for our people. And I will say, my superintendent's last back-to-school night ended up being a DMC, so that was bitter for me. I mean, he keeps it up always, but it was kind of sad that I think it's a major loss year in the district out of, I don't know. Anyway, so, welcome back.
Yeah, I thought that the welcome back was, I think I thought it was great for children. Like I was not saying that you guys thought something was there. We value all of every, each individual, every single person there. Appreciate the work that you're doing. And even in the conference, especially with the ladies, if there are issues that can be addressed, we suggest that people resent, people resent parents' values, what you're trying to say, those issues are needed in this. So great work, I'm glad you're doing great work, everybody, you know, there. But I thought that this district is, is good for a reason. We have good people and we value all the people and want to ensure that we do, same time, do well. And very much happy to be with that, for, 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 for.
Yes, it has been a great start to the year and we've talked about some of the ways that our staff gets together. And you know, when I think about our district, it is so special and what, and we put a lot of thought and plan into what makes it special and make sure we get attention to those things. And, you know, it is a place with high expectations, there's a lot of rigor, there's a lot of, a lot of all-around commitment and partnership with parents and staff and teachers and we have really highly skilled, trained, trained teachers, seeing what's happened, that we'll talk about. And as core of all of it, obviously, our wonderful children and supportive families. And that's the most fun is obviously we couple that rigorous attention to what makes teaching and learning is most impactful for our students with joy and attention to relationships and making sure it looks like where we all want to be, whether we're a child or an adult. And I just, one of the kids, we was talking at one of the schools and he looked up and he goes, uh, you might want to think on that. And it was, I mean, he had this suggestion, it was the cutest thing and I'm just like, you know, you do what you said, you want, whether it comes from a child or it was the way he said it and the principal was back and he looked and she said, you know what? I'm going to adjust that, I'm going to think on that. And it was the, just the best reaction. So listening to our kids is the most informative to do. And we really try to resolve on really thinking of respect to those kids and being great with making good decisions that really are for our, for our kids. So it's been a great welcome back and obviously we have the best staff. So it's been a great welcome back, and obviously we have the best staff in the whole world. Love working with all of them, and feel truly, it's such a pleasure to work here and serve this community. So great welcome back, and first date and first date late, thank you, thank you for that update on what they were on. And it's great, the back to school night was very, so it's going to look great here, and thanks to all of the partners. Many of you are brilliant, thank you so much.
All right, five point five, hearing of a public regarding agenda. Anyone would like to address your important agenda, either speaker's looking to turn in at this time. With a recognition called the podium, we requested that I come up with three minutes to address the government's important. Five point six, word approval, then it's for the July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty maybe, several approved events. Five point six. What's my name? I have a second. All in favor? Aye. Second agenda.
We had a request. From the board, I didn't want to read the question, I don't have the first.
First, the value agenda is its first one, and we request that the district's even exist putting a daily warrant in a manner that prevents a couple from knowing who the district is paying at the law service. Plus, how do you need the board members to know what services these ones have for? For example, the first country is the warrant number one four zero three dash nine nine six seven zero nine 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 three, with amounts placed in the five zero one six three dot two one two one zero nine, dash thirty nine, covering over two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. In total, for this, then the state warrants is five million, two hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-four cents. Moreover, it seems negligent for the board to prove these amounts without any idea of whose state or program. Or if the board has been told separately, and thus this information is intentionally dealing with health and the public, then that is a different and more serious problem. In addition, under agenda item six point one, there are purchase orders for over a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars just for legal fees from fund zero to one. And among other things, even if the board has given the superintendent and the court authority to initiate litigation against the CMUSC parents without board approval, I want to remind the board that the board is ultimately responsible for ensuring that tax payer dollars are being spent in the best interest of the students, and not being used frivolously or if perceived as personal endangerment. Also, as agenda item six point three includes over five thousand four hundred dollars for lock installation at Pacific Sky School, are lots sold to be installed at the other CMUSC schools. Further, I want to provide that the two hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-dollar HCI is a take from the Metro MM funds for security measures, including the access control system, CCTV, and surveillance system. That's going to include installing all the necessary locks. Finally, regarding agenda item six point six, we agree with the purchase playground equipment. The Delmar Hills playground is not playable. For example, the children can't use the springs because of the rust that comes off with the frame and stuff. This is not good for the current Delmar Hills students, as this should have already been said. Thus, I hope the board makes the Delmar Hills playground a priority. Thank you.
Thank you. So is there anything that anybody wants to hold off to further discuss in detail? Or is it just ask first question? Okay, so we're not taking four. Okay, are there any questions on the items presented?
Not a question, but just a thank you. I know that I'm not an honor here, and I don't want to give them the lead, but I will occasionally ask you questions about item six point one topics, and I appreciate your confidence and transparency. It gives me the confidence that the items that are being presented for us for proof are thoroughly staffed by the CMC in the room and everywhere else. I just want to thank you for taking the time to address the questions that I do have. And without, I would move to approve the consent item.
Over to Dave.
Hi.
Anything in the group? Seven point one, report reports under camp after school serving. Oh, right, and Vanessa Carol.
Hi. I'm very pleased to share all the fun stuff that we did over the summer, and then also share a little bit about the day we started our after school program. So our summer camps was a huge hit. This year, we know that at actually all school camps, there's a little C P, some of their activities that they had during the summer time. We had two different sessions, one in the month of spring, and one in the month of July. This week, we have the math and the math, and they're all involved in summer programs. Had a lot of fun Friday activities, and we were even able to bring in some different types of entertainment. Here we have a carnival day, where students are doing the face painting with the staff, and then we also have a soccer game that the students have. Our new session, we hosted a hundred and ninety-eight campers, and then in July, we also hosted one extra one, the one ninety-nine. This summer, we were able to offer services for students that were participating in the expanded learning opportunity program, which families might be below income, experiencing homelessness, or foster students. So we hope that each student has qualified for that program throughout the summer. We use the summer camp, we introduce the meal service. So in partnership with our central kitchen, they deliver the evening meals, which included breakfast, two snacks, and a lunch. So any student that has participated, whether they're expanded learning, or just regular summer camp students, they all participated in the lunch and the breakfast program. Again, new this year, we're able to host a different and rich activity. So it wasn't just fun play summer camp. We got to have karate, polo, ball, just a bunch of different fun activities that kind of spice up the summer camp activities, and really make it more fun for the students. We also got to participate in some yoga. So here are a few pictures of our students participating in chess, they're doing polo, some yoga, some field football games, and then even a little snack out of the kindergarten, trying to have a healthy mood. We had some fun Friday activities, where we encouraged all of our staff to dress up. The students got really excited about this too, because they really wanted to dress up and win their team competition. So we'll be right along into the after school program this year. So our goal is to provide all students in our program with a well-rounded, interactive, and engaging experience in the state and the regional environment. Our current enrollment this year is five hundred and eighty-seven students, and this is the highest enrollment that we've had ever since probably before COVID time. We are also able to serve our expanded learning families in the after school program. Right now, we have about sixty-one families that are currently participating. We are interested in considering hiring, once we start looking at a different series of these life applications, which is one of the ways that students qualify in a different student, who's in foster. All of our students, again, are able to not be charged anyone if they're participating in the regulation or ELOP students, that have the partnership with our school. Our staff team, we have a good interview ongoing, and in the last month, we hired about twenty-five of the two of the staff. And also, of course, there are large numbers of students that are interested in our district. They did great, it was exciting, they're online, they like the food. We had a little bit of flexibility during the summer to explore some different meal options for the students. They really like pizza, they really like the chicken sandwiches. I think there'll be some chicken tenders, so those are big gifts, and slugs are available.
Thank you for the update, and have a great summer, and a great year to come. Curious about the number that are enrolled, five hundred and seven, but is that more than before COVID? Or is it, I mean, is during this pandemic, more than, great?
Yeah, it's a higher average day dependence. So we have a five-day week option, so there's more students participating every single day. There was a time before COVID that there was a kind of a one-day or a stoppage there, and just because we have such a high need for full five-day week services, we transitioned to the evening.
Is there, are we meeting all of the demands from now to the top?
How about me fifty or so, who don't believe this right now, but we are still on board, you know, those twenty-five people who believe they believe in the spirit of the country?
From a budget perspective, is the overall program, that all that you described somewhat neutral? Or is it one way or the other? And depending on the answers, there is what it is compared to prior.
We are in a, just not financially, I think that we are, or the team shows, and more about the specific numbers. But we've been able to really think about things in a way that makes the finance sense, and we're more thankful of just the way that we're stacking the classroom, the way that we've been able to, we use different types of curriculums, a lot of planning and use of materials, but then we're able to reconsourcing items, the things that we've purchased. We've been very intentional that we can reuse over and over again, so some of those higher dollar amounts, we'll be special advantage, or it's part of, we're also able to share with PPA for donations. So this is a way that we can supplement some of the cost of doing business, but I think we're a little bit on my edge.
I mean, last year, in a camp positive, you know, bringing a little back to the root here for being a bright find. Let's go, remember, during COVID, and so during COVID, we were, we're spending half of them, they're significantly in the program, we moved back into the positive, and that's an excellent job of keeping that program continuing to move forward to that point. And with the, I work with HR, you know, a higher feeling need, but also doing a new dynamic river, trying to not have it go way over the positive, but keeping it good, but still having a curve in case there is, I think, a hard time, because it is something that is funded outside of our internal funds, we don't want to take that.
Here at eight point one, report reports.
Good evening, again, I'm thrilled to be with you and share our first official presentation after I initially talked about next year, twenty twenty-eight, of the last four days. I am going to share our first priority actions and overview for the year coming up. And then, as you know, throughout the year, I will be coming back, as will the rest of our staff, to share updates on identified priorities that we have in our student practice. But now, there are components of the plan, again, we did see that, an overview of the priority actions, and where everybody can find those, and then what our next steps are regarding the city, our very exciting state that's in the next. So the components of the plan are really focused on the major parts of our district that really centered around our vision and mission. So if we think about our vision and mission, that's the constant, our unwavering duty of serving school experience. And our mission since nineteen is to empower students to advance the world. That's remained constant for over time now, and continues to drive actually what we do and think about as a district. We've also got in the plan a portrait of a learner that we've identified, we've got four levers, and we've got long-range priority objectives for each of the levers, and annual priority actions. So you can see here, as I was saying, our vision, mission, and lead, this is a part that is a recurring content that we hold true, all of our decision-making as we go from year to year, and establish new priorities that are aligned with now what are our new four levers that we've identified.
That we think all of our students should strengthen, and be actually quite good at, as they go through our school system, and what we expect our sixth graders to possess as they finish our schooling in our district. And then we're looking on these priority, or excuse me, these levers. And these drive our work as a district, it all begins with these priorities. And these are four different categories or areas. We have the learning experiences, the first lever, responsive and caring culture is the second lever, stewardship resources, and then design. How are we categorizing what we're paying attention to, and where we're putting our priorities? This helps us to focus on these big areas in our district. So I'll start with the learning experience, that's lever number one. And you can see here that with lever number one, we identify that every learner receives equitable access to a strong academic forum, high-quality instructions, that they can learn across disciplines, they connect multiple ideas, they create new knowledge, and they engage and break through thinking. So when we think about that, I'll just talk about a couple of the examples in our priority actions for this year around our levers. So you know, we have our two new curriculums, our cultures of thinking and our central element of instruction. And this year, a couple of the priority actions that I want to pull out, just as examples, are, we do have newly adopted history, social science curriculum. So one of our priority actions for this year is to develop resources to support successful implementation of that new curriculum. Again, you can find all the things that are attached to our strategic plan in our, on the website, identifies each area and what priorities are paying attention to. Another priority action in this particular lever is that our teachers will continue to engage in differentiated professional learning opportunities, we talked about that a little bit already, in a culture of thinking, including opportunities to participate as fellow teachers. We've really focused on this teacher leadership capacity that now we can really leverage to help spread that expertise throughout the district, from teacher to teacher, as well as continuing using a cohort model. So you can see that those two areas become very specific when we think about the priority actions, and how we can further advance where we are with those two curriculums. Lever number two, we'll give you a couple of examples at this time for how are we paying attention to our, having a responsive and caring culture. We know that in order for all of this to happen, we need to pay attention to what kind of culture we co-create. So individuals are respected and valued for their unique contributions and differing diverse perspectives. And there exists this shared commitment to a culture of excellence, it's grounded in empathy, compassion, and a common purpose. So how do we do that, and what are some of the, what are some of the priority actions that we may be paying attention to? So a couple of them this year, we really are wanting to focus on further understanding the different cultures in our district, of our students, of our families, and really utilizing the new history, social science adoption in order to do that, so that's one of our priority actions. Another example of a priority action in this particular area is looking and identifying our district technology leaders who will research the impact of the digital world on our students, and determine how to share information in next practices with teachers throughout the district. We know that this generation of kids is a first generation completely born in and surrounded by a digital world. How does that impact them, leveraging again our teacher expertise throughout the district? Our third lever, as I was sharing earlier, is stewardship resources. So our human capital, physical resources, and facilities intentionally align in support of the extraordinary school experience for every child. So a couple of our example priority actions for this year is to include students and staff in the identification of next steps to reduce waste and increase recycling throughout the district. Something that we talked about with this board at the last couple of board meetings. You can see these priority actions already comes alive with the work being acted upon in the district. Another priority action, eight point four point two, is to hold a board trustees workshop regarding updated funding and construction cost estimates, as well as potential impacts of our bond program, which is scheduled for, being scheduled in the process of being scheduled for, what we plan on September. So examples of, again, of how we're addressing each of these levers and specific priority actions. Our next lever is design influence, this is a really rich, robust one. And it's really about these rich and meaningful learn, how this rich and meaningful learning occurs at the intersection of what we know as purposeful engaging learning, innovative thinking, and a compelling curriculum. And this is something that we really challenge ourselves, when you think about, you know, revolution to the school experience, looking at school through the perspective of our children, it really shows up in this lever. And how the physical environment also across all learning spaces supports that rich and meaningful learning. rich and meaningful learning, influences how individuals interact, their behaviors and their engagement in ways that are authentic and personal. And the ways in ways that we can benefit from the collaborative approach of all of us, adults and staff and and children. So when we think about a, what are a couple of the example priority actions for this year in this particular area, design influence, is to develop our leadership capacity and utilize teacher leadership to support staff with highly effective instructional practice, combine the elements of the environment, the support responsiveness to individual student needs. We know that it's really about being responsive to what the different unique needs are of students. So how do we leverage that and build that leadership capacity and share that throughout the district? Another one, four point five point one, is to identify outdoor spaces that are underutilized and determine needed upgrades and improvement to promote learning beyond the traditional classroom. So again, you can see there are examples of ways we approach um, and and address priorities and move the district forward and particularly move the experience for our students forward in each of these four levers, these four categories, big areas that that help us really focus our work. So implementation, we're at a wonderful place right now. There are two main things as we're thinking about with implementation. And one is how do we advance the goals of destination twenty twenty eight? And we know that through these priority actions, they're not just, some of them were already on the, were already on the road, were on the path, some of them are much more complex and we're just starting with that. So and we also know, some of them may extend beyond this year. So we look at it long term, as far as how we actually have the right priorities, speaking our vision and mission at the heart of everything we're doing. And of course, as I said, looking at all of this through the lens of our students. Another part of implementation is tracking our progress, how do we know if we're making a difference, will we focus on the right things and is it isn't having an impact? So we do, how do we do that? We will do that through continuous feedback and input from our students. We have our assessment results, both formative and summative, so that tell us how we're doing. Ongoing surveys of adults who work here, adults in the community, as well as our students. Our focus groups are highly impactful with both um, uh, staff members and and students and parents. And then we're excited about our better together partnership, where we're going to be able to embark on that survey that will give us some reports on some things that are reported to us, um, particularly in that lever, our responsive and caring culture. How do we create this dynamic culture where we really are, really is a place where we can do our best, be our best, and have this be just a wonderful place for all the adults and children? It's going to be a great year, so I'm happy to respond to any questions. As I said, I just pulled out a couple representative priority actions from each one. There are quite a few for the year, and we we uh, make sure that we we address them um, in a timely manner that makes sense. And we've already been have have have, we already have a lot of great work occurring with those areas.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? So I have a question, how it gets rolled out, that based on the last slide? So in some organizations I've seen where you have these broad goals, and then you turn to the departments and say, what are you going to accomplish this year and how do they tie to those goals? And what are the measurable metrics? So when I reach the end of the year, you know, I've accomplished these five things, I know my department has done a great job of advancing those goals. And then in taking it a step further, once the department has the goals, do we roll it up to individuals to say, at the end of the year, when I do your evaluation, if you do the following three things that tie to this lever or this goal, how I know you've had a successful year? So could you address a little bit of the detail of how you incentivize the departments and the individuals to stay focused on accomplishing those goals?
Sure. So in its entirety, we all collectively own the responsibility of making this happen for children. As we as we actually create the conditions for it to happen, they have to be owned. So quite candidly, someone needs to own, are we making progress and how do we how do we put that in motion? So for example, the uh, the goal around, I'll just pull out history, social science, that is owned by our instructional services department, who makes sure that those actions that are in place, that need to support that implementation and those resources actually happen. Then it is, it becomes more personalized as it goes to the school sites. The schools are each unique and are at a different place. So when there's an awareness of what the whole district is focused on, then the school themselves, along with the principal, the teaching staff, if we can determine where are we along here, what makes sense for us to be focusing on? And then they can continue with their own priorities as a school, and then it gets to the next level as an individual. So what's great about this, and we've practiced so much now, teacher leadership capacity, is the cohort model that we use allows for different entry points for various teachers and all of us in the district to get what we need and to contribute in the ways that we're able to contribute. So depending on if you're a graduate teacher, you might be attending more. If you're a teacher who's been part of, for example, our work in with the pilot of the history, social studies, you might be involved in actually a leadership part of that. So I think there are a number of ways, and it goes all the way from somebody has to own it, what are we measuring? So obviously, each priority action might be measured in a different way. And then how do we make it personalized for the school and each individual as far as being part of that goal?
So just want to follow up. Are we going to have a check in at some point where we say, it's been X number of months and here's what we've measured and what we've accomplished towards particular goals?
We do. So that can depend, that will depend on the lever and the priority actions. So sometimes it's coming back and reporting to, oh, we've, this has been one of our priorities for the year, we've accomplished it, or we're in process for one of the examples would be how we're addressing recycling, um, being more conscientious about the environment, those kinds of things that we would come back and report. Okay, now we have that implemented, the board is taking action, we're working um, in collaboration together with the school sites, and we can say if it's not implemented at all, school sites, and that's our measure of success for that. Another, another area might be something that is measured by what we have with our better together survey. So it will be, it depends on what it is we're measuring, but we do have a way to measure each one of those. And that's why it's important, is someone that, someone or department owns it as well.
I always want to ask that a little bit, just kind of how, you mentioned better together, I was going to ask that how it is measured, how's it working out? I was wondering if we're going to hear anything on that?
Yes, we will. And so our our timeline for that is to, as we move into fall and winter, have something ready to um, survey. And then as as you know, we then be, he would be um, putting that data together that kind of gives us a benchmark, and then we get to measure over time, um, how those results are looking and what we want to maybe add to to that survey over time as well. But yes, he's working on that with his team. Yes, plus.
Thank you.
Thank you, we're excited. Thank you.
Eight point two, board appointment of citizens oversight committee member, Mr. Bellantino. Good evening, President Mauch, Board of members. This evening, eight points two is board appointment of citizens oversight committee member. And I'm going to start with, I mean, it's with a heavy heart that I share that the reason that I'm here is because Ira Sharp, who's been a longtime member of the COC and someone who's really been a supporter of the students, the staff, the schools in our district, unfortunately, sadly passed away over the summer. And I, Ira led a full, full life, and we were fortunate enough to have him really be a part of our district from before the inception of the Philly's master plan, be a part of a lot of the conversations there, and then a big member of citizens oversight committee. And really just a person who, if you were fortunate enough to meet him, get to know him, I think everybody who met him felt like you were his friend and he cared about you. He had a, a, a way of of connecting with people, was a wonderful human being. And so very sad to be replacing him. We are fortunate though to have a proposed new member, Pranav Sharma. He is the founder and CEO of the biotech startup. Uh, he is the parent of two teams at Sage Canyon, and he was part of an interview process we did this spring and was very highly regarded in that process. Unfortunately, at that time, we only had one position to offer and we uh, he was still interested in being a part of this. We had a board member, President Mauch, was on that panel. And so we can confidently recommend that we fill this opening with Mr. Sharma. So we're bringing that to the board tonight to uh, fill the COC prior to our next citizens oversight committee.
I don't think there's any questions, yeah. Yeah, just want to say, yeah, we missed Ira as well, and I think that he's, we'll provide that, that, that touch as well. Just, he's very good. Um, and I also interviewed uh, Pranav Sharma, and I thought he would be a wonderful person to, to citizens oversight me. So I guess I will, uh, to the points, there's seconds. Wonderful. In all my favor, my side, and motion to point to Pranav Sharma and COC president. Thank you. Nine point one, board report, facilities update, uh, early samples.
Good evening, board. Assistant Director report, the August facilities update tonight. Tell me, discussing the Delmar, Delmar Hills Academy modernization, the Delmar Heights School rebuild, and summer projects that we completed this summer. So with the Delmar Hills modernization, we continue to investigate the basic options um, where you're in the process of reviewing, developing, construction documents, on the planning, on reporting more on this at the uh, facilities, or workshops, and some type of group. The Delmar Heights rebuilt uh, project, as you guys know, we we started in March sixth. We are up to seventy plus workers on site, daily return from all the, all the trades. We, today we completed the staff upgrade, which was the last um, four uh, projects. That's a huge milestone for the project. And we will continue to do the vertical steel and structural, structural steel and framing. Um, and I'll start with you some pictures of where we're at with the project, as I explained today. You can see a lot of the wood framing is up, um, picture of one of the cement uh, concrete trucks is there, a lot of the vertical and uh, horizontal steel that is going up for classroom buildings. You can see one of the interior pictures there on the right. Then next, we have our summer projects. Um, we did our, we continue to modernize our classrooms with the modern burning studios. We did Sycamore upper field renovation, uh, new roof at the admin building for the Carmel Delmar School. Uh, Ashley Pauls, we did some asphalt repairs and still has strength of the playgrounds, um, tinder and the, our very upper graveyard. And then our, our new playgrounds out there, Sage Canyon and Torrey Woods. I do have some pictures of the completed projects, the one up in the middle, it's Sage Canyon, it's just sort of the process of, with the board of rubber getting, um, or in place, getting installed. And there are additional pictures, uh, showcases of the work that was completed. On the left, there you see Ashley Pauls, um, in his slurry and striking, uh, one of our modern learning studios at Carmel Delmar. There's some, a portion of the roofing project that was done, um, over at CDM, and then we got the Sycamore upper grade field that was completed, um, this summer as well. That, is there any questions?
Just, I understand delaying the playground and uh, Delmar goes for the reconstruction, but can we get chains on the swings? I mean, it sounds to me as though they're... It just sounds like a no brainer. Okay, thank you.
Something you have a follow up question. I think our parents and children and staff are the eyes and ears when they see an issue on site, so it's always great to hear about that. Do you have a recommended process for when, when someone sees a, a facilities issue that needs to be raised, is it better to raise it in the school site or centrally through your office? What advice do we have for our parent community to to raise issues and most of you?
Generally, they would bring it up to the school site, or at the school site, they'd bring it up to the, their teacher, the student, or the principal, or the front office staff. And then they'll submit a work order, um, based on safety, we either try to, or we call it a Q, or a work order, and we try to accomplish that process.
Great, thank you. And then my other question, with tropical storm already coming through, I was curious if any of the precipitation or winds impacted at all the Delmar Heights project?
So they did, it's significant water, but and as of today, they were still pumping some of that water out, and uh, the focus was to make sure that we continue on schedule. So they pumped up the water that was in the trench where we were going to do the, the last four for today, uh, which they were successful and we're here to complete that uh, today to complete that milestone for the project.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, men. Appreciate it. Nine point two, board report, utilize CMAS number three two two zero five one zero three seven and three two two one two one zero four three three, is a first interconference system control systems. Chris and Carlos.
Good evening, again, members of the board. Uh, we are here tonight to request approval for an agreement to purchase access control systems. And in this, we, we thought it'd be pertinent to come and share with the board a little bit of the background on uh, this item and uh, the process that we went through and where we are in some of our next steps. So we have some input and investigation that we did last year that led us to uh, this system, uh, the identified system and then the timeline for installation. So over the course of last school year, we gathered input and investigated potential further security measures that may be in place at our school sites. Uh, we had, as Jenny Pau spoke to the Sandy County Office of Education Safety Coordinator meetings that she attended, the school safety collaborative, we gathered input from the Sandy County Police Department, and had some school site visits. We did the board presentation in April last spring and a community meeting in May as well, as, as a number of other smaller input gathering pieces along the way. Over the course of the next four slides, I'll share a couple of items from that April uh, twenty sixth uh, school safety presentation, uh, that really uh, highlights the, the basis and the background on this next steps. And so as we shared, best prevention strategy centers on recognizing, assessing, and managing threats concerning behaviors. And so we have a number of items in place along those lines, but also looking at the social, emotional, and mental health support that we can provide for our students. We also, as you know, have site safety as have been our top priority, and our sites develop a comprehensive school site safety plan on a annual basis and con, and consultation of law enforcement. There are a number of steps taken across each school site to secure access, uh, including controlling access to the site, ensuring doors are easily locked in case of emergency, conducted training to drills, and monitoring the site throughout the day. And then in, in addition, and just as important as safety is, um, the overall wellbeing of our students, and this is a paramount to our success of the district. And so there's a focus in every site on supporting all students in a wide variety of ways. And so we have a number of those ways listed here that we discussed in the lesson.
All right, one of the next steps is from the April board meeting was to identify inside lock-in system for securing the front doors and monitoring access for our visitors at all of our school sites. The system we selected, um, was based on availability and one that would work throughout throughout the district at all of our nine school sites. Um, system's called AI phone, it's an IP-based data intercom system. There will be two stations at the front office, so that the admin and office system could have control of, or give a app buzzer in the person when they approach the front door. And then the access control, it'll be a key part for staff that, you know, um, you know, when maintenance goes or somebody else from the district goes, we're not constantly uh, interrupting the day-to-day or cooperation of the school, uh, front office staff, as we do, you know, as maintenance staff, we go there constantly. Um, so it'd be pretty hard for them to continue to open the door, you know, in five, 10 minutes when someone approaches the, that's a staff related, um, to buzz us in. So that's one of the abilities of the system. And then we'll be able to remotely add and remove staff as the staff changes or, you know, people from the district or come into the district as the employees. And then, as I mentioned, the front office staff will have the abilities to buzz in visitors. Then timeline, based on the, the board's recommendation, approval procurement would grant this space to be by the end of September, and then installation by the end of October at all of our sites. And then with the communication piece, we want to make sure we, uh, we will be developing messages, messaging to our students, staff and parents so that they understand the process for entering the school. Once the access control systems are installed, we will also be conducting dry runs of the system to ensure that it's working as expected, um, and that our process is clear to the staff and families. One of the things that we are very mindful is making sure that our schools remain welcome, welcoming warm places that we'll continue to put a lot of thought into as we install these systems and communicate how they will work for our school to be.
Questions? Thank you. Questions?
Thank you for the presentation and for doing all the research and planning. Could you just summarize, because we discussed this in the previous meeting, uh, what the system does do and what it doesn't do? Um, and then as a second point, thank you for including the communication plan there as far as engaging with parents and basically to convey the same information that I asked you about, right?
So the system will be used to be able to have a front office of office staff, be able to, uh, see who is entering and be able to buzz them in, uh, when somebody comes to the door. So we'll be able to, regardless of where they are, we have different layouts in our, uh, front offices, they'll know and be able to see who's coming in, be able to buzz them in when, uh, somebody is coming to the front door. And then it stays locked outside of the time when we are buzzing somebody through the, uh, alarm system.
And just to clarify, how do they sign the letter?
So we will be letting in anybody who has business in the school.
Um, how do you know if they have business at the school?
Unless somebody, uh, clearly presents as a danger, then they will be let in because the, uh, our general, a wide variety of people with business at the school.
Yeah, and we will assume that people who are coming up to the door, uh, we would want our office staff to know that they would, they will obviously be coming to the door with business for the school. So the intent of that they will have access to come into the school.
Okay, thanks. I mean, this is overall really very clear with the communication that goes on to parents and support planning with what it's meant to do and what, you know, what the purpose of this extra layer of security that has been added, uh, is for, um, it's not a monitoring system. It is a, uh, or.
That's correct. It's other system to allow for to, you know, to, to that, for that initial, I, I'm at the door, I have business at the school, which is why I'm at the door and I will be let in.
So it, it sounds to me like it's part of a bigger picture of layers.
That's exactly what, what's going through my head right now. It's one layer of a multi-layered system for set security, which comes along with the scene point of entry, comes along with lock-in doors, comes along with our first management system that we are pulling out so that, uh, we have a prevention for all of our staff. It goes along with our, uh, B T E P so that somebody can, uh, put in, uh, a note that they didn't submit that they think there's somebody who is, uh, a threat in the original vicinity of the school. There are a number of layers that all fit together with this one piece of, of, of.
Because we all understand, you know, it's kind of the board saying, hi, I'm a bad guy, let me in, uh, people like it. So, I mean. I, I, I like the idea of having multiple layers to, uh, security. I don't know whether such a thing is a cool, uh, system. So having different layers makes sense because not one system is made for that.
So right, guys, tonight the question is whether to approve this purchase, which I'm inclined to do. I did want to talk a little bit about the communication and then a little bit about the messaging on, on the layers, which I think are for, for the future. But I could, I'll go in reverse order. And you think it would be helpful after this is rolled out, we have an opportunity to address the community again about all of the different, um, safety measures and security measures that we have. Nick who spoke and left, you know, is a great example of a, a parent, be a new parent, the district would benefit from understanding all of that. So I want to address that tonight, but I would like to do that sometime in the future, once this is implemented as part of the larger package. Going to the communication, I had a question about the installation. And so it says anticipated by the end of October. Do you plan to do the same work at each site and roll them all out at the same time? Or will it be rolling where you might start with one site and then go site by site by site?
We, we would anticipate a rolling, uh, we'll roll out. But we will also, as Chris said, we'll be developing the communication first, we'll be doing a dry run to make sure that it works and then we'll be communicating out at each site as it is installed.
Great. And so that led into the thought that was on my mind, which is as a human factors engineer and thinking about implementing new systems, oftentimes it's good to do a little bit of a pilot at the first one instead of trying to do them all at the same time. And so I think having parents and staff doing a little bit of, uh, dry run role-playing even before the system is installed. So you can develop training and communication in advance. So that way, when you're ready to go on day one, we have the opportunity, uh, to answer the questions that, you know, Erica and, and I and others are going to have. And if you can get parents involved with anticipating questions, I think you're going to have a more successful communication plan to roll out.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So we are requesting approval as well.
Oh, my bad. That's right. Okay, yes, so, uh, is your motion approved, the group?
So moved.
All right. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to eleven point one, personal board information, staffing rolling updates. Mr. Shannon.
So, good evening, President Locke, members of the board, Dr. McLeary. So it is my pleasure in this evening to provide an update regarding our district's enrollment and staffing update. We've had a number of special board meetings talking about enrollments and staffing, so you may have had a bit of a sneak preview. But today what we wanted to be able to share are current numbers from about our first week. So our first slide shows our district at a glance as we're looking at our K through six enrollment across our district. And so as you were looking across the columns, you'll see it's organized by grade, by the number of sections that are particular grade level, by the total students, again, K through six within each of those grade levels. And then also identifying our average class size at each of those grade levels. So as we're looking across our district, we show that we have eight hundred and seventy-three sections of K through six this year. And you'll see in greater detail on the next slide, it's a total of enrollments of three thousand six hundred and thirty-six students. So, uh, every year when I do this, there is a question regarding the, what is that, point five as far as the twenty-two point five looking at sections? And so those point fives that represents where we may, where we have a combination class. And so in that particular case, that's reflected, there's a one combo in that. Uh, across the district, we do have a total of three combination classes. That's also a question that folks will ask from time to time. And I do want to highlight the average class size because when we look at average class sizes ranging from eighteen-three, nineteen-point-six, twenty-point-one, nineteen-point-six, twenty-two-point-three, twenty-three-point-four, twenty-three-point-six. It really is reflective of our district priorities of maintaining low class size. Vivien, you're the word here into that cap on primary grades of twenty-two and the order direction of twenty-five that are upper grades. And so it's a real nice class size averages that we're able to have. Across the district this year, we were able to welcome a total of six hundred and seventeen new students to the family, to our district. So that represents the three hundred and sixty-six kindergarteners and then we have an additional two hundred and fifty-one new students who have been to our district in through grades one through six. We've been having conversations relative to the kindergarten capture rate, the number of kindergartners who have been coming in. So the number that we landed on for that first week was a total of three hundred and sixty-six students. So I do want to note that that does represent the capture rate to fifty-nine percent. We were traditionally, we have been, uh, we've been averaging around seventy-six percent. And then in the last two years coming out of COVID, we've been down at about seven percent. So that fifty-nine percent capture rate was considerably lower than we were anticipating. We've, uh, through board direction, we have also shared our current enrollment numbers with Davis Demographics. So that what they'll be able to do is we talked here about conducting a sensitivity analysis to identify long-term what might enrollment look like at different parameters. If we see that, uh, capture rate in our fluctuate from year to year. And so with that sensitivity analysis, we'll have that information, be able to bring back to the board at an upcoming board workshop. Our next slide looks at our K through six enrollment by school site. And so you'll see on the left column, you'll see each of our nine schools and then you'll see the enrollment per school site. And again, for a district total enrollment, three thousand six hundred and thirty-six. Uh, as you're aware, we currently have Delmar Heights is situated on two different campuses. And so when we look at the total size of Delmar Hills, which is accommodating our primary Delmar Heights students as well as all of Delmar Hills, we still are at a class, at a total size of that campus, four hundred and thirteen students. And then where we have our upper grade students from Delmar Heights, uh, housed over at Oceanair, that gives us a total of ocean of six hundred and forty-one students as well in that particular campus. And then last we go staffing, it's been very busy within H R and we've been pleased to be able to welcome forty-one new staff members to our district. So that represents sixteen certified staff, uh, two principals, twenty-three classified staff, including A S P workers, C N S staff, student support staff. And across our district, we have a total of two hundred and ninety-two certified positions. So when we're talking about our certified positions, we're looking at our K through six teachers, our seamless specialists, our sixth grade Spanish teachers, our TOSSs, our certified management. And then we also include our certified specialty providers such as ed specialists, psychologists, speech and language pathologists. And then we also have two hundred and seventy-nine, stuff with glasses where they work close but not for a distance. So, and then we have two hundred and seventy-nine of our classified positions. So that's including our office support staff, our maintenance and operations and custodial staff, our instructional aides, our E C D As, our occupational therapists, our A S P workers, and we got to hear a little bit about them today. Technology support, E C D C, our C N S staff, who's been growing and all our combo support folks. So with that, have you had any answering questions?
Thank you, Ryan. Questions?
I do have one little question. We're in, I was talking about this, um, in our board workshops, but, um, question, when new families move into the district, do you count and track their younger siblings that are coming in and, and like feed that information to the Davis demographic in any way that would be significant for our planning?
I don't know the answer to that, other than anecdote, not to Davis and finding out. So for example, Erica, like we have a kindergarten or a first grader who moves in and find out they have a first grader or a second, or excuse me, a one-year-old or a two-year-old, do you have the report? Is that what you're asking?
Right, you're not thinking of the woman who spoke to them with a baby and another child hasn't entered the district yet. So I mean, it seems like certain amount is knowable, uh, have to prepare it for time. I don't know, just a question for Davis really is.
Correct. Right, because you had that move, you had that birth grade date to five years ago, but then looking at that gap, so I could find out.
Family's moving in, like maybe they didn't have.
Correct.
I just want to say those, uh, class sizes are actually really incredible. It's a really great benefit to the initial student, I mean, the attention that they can receive from the teachers, um, and the teachers not having to, uh, work with a large number of students, be able to work with smarter kids. I think that's wonderful. So I mean, I, I really pleased, I think that our numbers are able to be at such levels. I, I don't know that I've seen other public schools, public districts that are at that, at that range. It's kind of incredible, you know, when you're talking about upper grade usually part pushing above thirty. And so seeing everyone twenty-three is, is pretty, pretty outstanding. So very happy to have that, thank you. Any, any third questions on this?
Well, I was frankly surprised to see that Carmel Delmar and the, the large population, is that new?
No, I want to see this as being either second or the, or at this time. It's that since we saw we tend to have a bit more mobility at this time, but C D M is getting more of a, a partial term for sale.
So you mentioned the spread of the Delmar Heights community, uh, we're down there at Oceanair, oh, six forty-one. What was it, uh, where's the Delmar Hills number?
It's a total capacity that are the total number of students in that site is more than two.
And then the sensitivity analysis, will we have that before the September board workshop? Is that the goal? I know we are looking at September and October and do you think it's reasonable to have that by September?
That, that's, the goal is to have it by the September of the board workshop.
And then it's no surprise that enrollment overall has been dropping. We know that, we had that conversation. And we have a, a little bit of an extra surprise with kindergarten and we had some different theories of whether it was families moving out or families here but not availing themselves of kindergarten. I was wondering if there are any data points you received from the other grades or school sites where you saw drops in the number of students you expected as you're hitting the first day of school? That might inform us of what families are doing.
I will, actually, Chris and I were looking at some of the numbers earlier today and it actually seems as if our, our numbers between our grade levels, first through six, have held pretty stable, pretty consistent with what we're anticipating. See, it's, the numbers are consistent with regard to the, I don't have the report, but we look at survivability of the cohorts. It's, it's as if we're seeing that drop within sixth grade that we see the number of our students. You know, we, as we've heard, and it was that's not, we see one of the sixth graders who sometimes pursue private school at that time. But as we looked, uh, antitimately in our, it's the numbers across the grade levels at this moment in time. Once they're in our system, have remained received.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ryan. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we are at, uh, twelve, both hands, twelve point one, order view. Reminder of, I mean, these new, the M U S D events.
Four, 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 do we close this meeting up or?
Yes, so we're going to close this one. Once we close this one, then we'll go, so we're going to be at the session and recess. And then we're at twelve point two, order view, reminder of making the M S D F P T events. And then twelve point three, order view, remaining items for September regular board meeting. Have you had any?
This is having probably ordinary board calendars since we discussed it previously, but, um, I think would be really instructive to just understand more of the educational philosophy and approach behind the, to the libraries, the board and the public to, to understand, you know, uh, how it all works. Really for the learning and education, but I know a lot of thought has gone to it. Remember, remember.
Thank you. Anything else? And then twelve point two, German meeting. Is your motion adjourned? Second? Motion to German meeting, oh, sorry, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to German meeting passes. Meeting is adjourned at seven twenty-one. And now we will reconvene our special board meeting, uh, which had recessed earlier. And we're reconvening the events at seven twenty-one. We're at four point one, uh, for consideration for resolution number twenty twenty-three, fourteen, resolution of the Urban Board of Chiefs of the Delmar Hills School District. Procure emergency services for repair slash replace bell system at Torrey Hill School and making findings that the bidding is not available and irritable. Mr. Bell?
Thank you. Uh, so this evening we are, um, holding the special board meeting because we have a bell system or K A system. The circuit board and system, uh, went down right before school started. So we worked to quickly identify a fix and get quotes. And as we're getting them, they are at a, a, a number that would require a formal bidding or an informal bidding process, which would extend the timeline. We want to do this down as quickly as possible because having a K A system and having bell system for schools' operations are very important. So we have received three bids. We have them in a range of approximately a hundred and forty-five, one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars for the responsive bids. We will be looking to, uh, contract with them very quickly and procure as quickly as we can. We think that we can get the product within three to four weeks. And with that, taking some time to get it, it's taking another ten days to post it and get the quote, the quotes and then bringing it to the board. Felt like we are keeping the school without that for a long period of time. So we look at this as an emergency for the school site and looking at emergency procurement. And that process requires the board's board approval. We will come back to the board at September board meeting to ratify the contracts and to in essence close out of that emergency. And so we will be bringing the contract to the board at that September meeting. But we'll also be able to move forward with it and getting that fixed as quickly as we can. So with that, we would request, uh, have you had any answering questions you might have? And we request that for this, both to be able to.
Thank you, Chris. I can understand the immediacy of this situation. Can you explain to me how you went about going to, uh, Can you explain to me how you, when it's about going to talk with whoever provided bids, how you contacted them or...
I was going to speak to the... And ask all those, all those to...
Thanks, Mike.
The real... Yeah, so we reached out to the vendors that we've worked with throughout the year that service our systems and test them. So we were pressing the votes. Once we received them, we realized that, as Chris mentioned, we were already prepared to procure it, just the right or lack of...
So it's the, so it's both any previous that you have worked with, currently with them?
Thank you.
Couple of questions. What happened? Do we know the reason that it failed?
Yeah, so the, it was the legacy system, the system's 20 years old. It, the board just gave up. It failed that Friday, the school's starting on Monday. They were trying to fix the company that we worked with. A couple of them came out to try to troubleshoot it, try to see if they could fix it to get the board up and running. They weren't able to find a replacement since it's a 20-year-old system. And this led us to try and find a system that will work and upgrade it to today's standards.
And how many other systems in the district are on the brink of a 20-year timeline? It appears that this is the lifespan of the system since this, and we have other systems that might need replacement. My question then is, does it make sense and maybe get the benefit of reduced price for purchasing more of these systems? Does it make sense to go looking for those other systems while we're doing this? Because we might get a better deal on, you know, buy two, get one free. I don't know.
So I could speak on the, the deal portion of it. We are, we would be utilizing the feedback contract that's already in place. So we are getting the best deal available, whether we buy the one system or six to replace the other school sites.
And did this motivate, did this motivate us to check to ensure that those other school sites don't have issues similar to this? Or is this something you can't tell if it's going to fail until it fails?
Yeah, we can't tell if it's going to fail or not. One thing we do is we service the systems throughout the year. We, and we check them twice. And then we redo the bell schedules at summertime so that when the new school year comes, we, you know, we change times so that, and that's where we identify either there's a need or a repair needed. Then most of the time, it's a minor, like a power adapter, but this one was the actual core of the system. So yeah, it's hard to tell whether it's going to fail or not.
So would it be proactive if we have a school that's 18 years into its lifespan, the board anyway? Does it make sense to replace that board?
And we'll be looking at potentially being proactive in placement of others with this happening. We want to address this first and then looking at a timeline, what's a reasonable time to update without impacting another school site. You know, we'd want to do it during the break and those kind of things so it's least impactful to a school site. So we may be bringing back something to the board in the relatively near future, depending on the needs of the other school sites.
And you don't think we can leverage, give us a good deal on this one? And maybe there's eight more coming down?
No, because there's set pricing. So I think we're, we're better off just dealing with the emergency now and getting this dealt with so we can get Torrey Hills up and running and at the same time doing some analysis and looking at whether we have others we need to replace in the shorter term.
Thanks.
And so when you say set pricing, one of my questions was whether this estimate of $145,000, $166,000, what is standard cost we paid before for a similar system? It's not, we're not paying more because of the urgency? We're not, we're not paying more. We compared it to what we are installing over at the Heights, and it's comparable pricing, both on labor and the equipment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? So... I'm sorry, okay. Oh, right, 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 right. No problem. Is there motion to adopt resolution 202314? And due to the absence of the board clerk, authorize the board secretary to execute resolution 202314 on the clerk's behalf?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt resolution 202314. And due to the absence of the board clerk, authorize or secreted execute resolution 202314 on the clerk's behalf. Passes, so. Point one, adjournment meeting. As motion is adjourned. Special meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second? All right. Is it all those in favor?
Aye.
Most passes, meeting is adjourned at 7:28. Thank you very much.
Thank you.